Warming them up. All right, want to welcome everybody here. Will have everybody come in and please silence your cell phones if you would please, or turn them off. It is officially three o'clock, May thirtieth, 2023. We're in the Commissioner's Chambers Room, and we will start off with the Pledge of Allegiance by Wendy. No, Melanie. We'll start off with a prayer with Wendy.
We're thankful for this beautiful day, and we're thankful for the moisture that we have received in this valley. We are thankful for those that have served and sacrificed for our freedoms. As we celebrate them this Memorial Day, we pray that we will keep them in our memories and that we will pay respects and that is due to them. And we ask a blessing to be upon this meeting today, that the decisions that are made here today will be for the benefit of our county. And once again, we are grateful for the opportunity that we have of living here and being in this community. And we say these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Wendy. Melanie, thank you. All right. Approval of minutes of the May twenty-second, 2023 work session and May twenty-third, 2023 meeting.
I would make a motion that we approve the minutes of May twenty-second work session and May twenty-third commission meeting.
I have a motion. I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Mr. Wilkins, report on the warrants, of the warrants.
Commissioner's warrants from May twenty-fifth in the amount of $273,333.30. And they were just normal bills, nothing out of line, nothing new, nothing big, just general repairs and utilities and things like that.
Okay. All righty. Any tax matters?
I do not have any.
Good. All righty. Now let's see if we, I can stumble through this first part here. Community Development Lot Grant, Second Public Hearing, Small Cities Program, Jenny Byrd Grants. I will start it off by open the Second Public Hearing for the CDBG program. This hearing is called to allow all citizens to provide input concerning the project that was awarded under the 2023 Community Development Lot Grant Program. Uena County has applied for funding on behalf of the Golden Age Center Mills on Wheels Program. Jenny, did I do that right?
Yes, perfect. Uente Jenny Byrd Grants, Uente County CDBG grant application was successful in the regional rating and ranking process for the Mills on Wheels Vehicle Project. The grant application that was awarded was $61,060. The grant will be used to purchase a new four-wheel drive truck with temperature-controlled food boxes for the Golden Age Center's Senior Mills on Wheels Program. And as part of the final application requirements, we have to hold the Second Public Hearing for any comments.
All right. Anybody in the public have any concerns, comments? All right.
Mike has something.
I know that's only like eighty percent. Who's making up the balance of it?
So the total amount is $71,060, and the Golden Age Center is contributing $10,000 for the $10,000 difference.
They are, do you remember Jenny, are they eligible for one of these pickups like every other year? Or do you know how that, or do you know?
We can apply every year.
Year?
They did recently change how they fund for Mills on Wheels. They don't like to replace fleet. So we are adding a route. So if we have the need, like we're serving more seniors and we're expanding the program, we're eligible. But if it's just to replace the fleet, then the county's on the hook for that.
Okay, yeah. I knew it replaced them a few years ago, and I didn't know if it was by grants or how we did it.
Yeah.
But it's my understanding, if I remember right, I think a little over two hundred people we are serving, and they was talking about adding the sixth or seventh route. I can't remember, but.
Yeah, we're adding a seventh route, and it is just under three hundred.
Three hundred, yeah.
We gave them projected numbers, so that route would be with anticipated growth.
It's a great deal for our seniors on Mills on Wheels. They have to qualify for it and go through a process and procedures to qualify for it, or they can voluntarily pay to some of them do. And it's very good for anybody in the community that ever would like to go on a ride along with them and see who they are serving and what it consists of. And it's a neat program. And so Jenny, thank you and Zeke for the work on this, and we appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we need a motion? Is there anything on that?
No, I think this was just for a public hearing, right?
Public hearing, yes.
So no actions needed. So you'll just need to close the public hearing and we can move on.
Okay. We'll go ahead and close the public hearing at this time on this one. All right, now we need to recess for MBA Authority, Municipal Building Authority Board Member Appointments. So at this time, Commissioner Larson is the chair, and he has, I should have excused him earlier. He needs to be excused today. And so I will, let's see, I think we'll turn the time over to you at this time, and then we'll bounce back and forth here, I think.
Okay. We need to make board appointments, and I believe that is because it used to have Bill and Mark.
Sorry, just a matter of whatever. Don't they need to make a motion to go into Municipal Building Authority?
Or do we just recess into that?
Well, the chair can just recess it into, because they're technically two separate entities.
That's why I'm wondering if they needed to.
So we, I think the chair for the county would just, you can just say we're recessing until we complete the MBA business, and then you can just switch it back over.
Just didn't want to miss something that way.
Recessing for the MBA Authority at this time, and we'll time, turn the time over to Sonya at this time.
Since the Commissioner Larson, he is the MBA Chair and is not here, I will conduct the MBA business. And the first item we need to do is board appointments.
Okay, I'd like to make the motion that we put Commissioner Norton in as the Secretary of the MBA.
Can I second that?
You can, because there's nobody else here.
Okay, so I will second that, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. So as Acting Secretary now, I will conduct on Agenda. Item number two is a grant application that we have for the Community Impact Board. Uena County is in the process of submitting an application to the Community Impact Board Fund for a grant in the amount of $1,050,000 and a loan in the amount of $450,000 for a project total of $1.5 million. The purpose of this grant is the acquisition of necessary pieces of road equipment for road maintenance and operations. The equipment would include semi-trucks, belly dumps, and necessary accessories. The project description is, I just want everyone to be aware that Uena County is the largest natural gas producer in Utah and is the state's number-two overall mineral producer behind its neighboring county Duchene. Uena County's economy is heavily reliant on the oil and gas industry, and county officials continue to promote the preservation and growth of this industry. There are 1,432 linear miles of maintained roads consisting of 576 miles of Class B paved roads, 740 miles of Class B gravel roads, and 116 miles of Class B native roads in Uena County. Additionally, there are 4,451 miles of Class D unmaintained roads for a total of 5,883 miles. That's a lot of miles of roads in Uente County. The county has purposely constructed many of these roads to accommodate the oil and gas industry in remote areas of the county, including roads that lead to or intersect with Duchene County roads. Oil and gas workers use these rural roads for extracting resources, servicing wells, and transporting oil and gas commodities. The volume of heavy trucks and equipment used on county roads, coupled with the seasonal maintenance of snow plowing, grading, and flood mitigation, causes continuous damage and cost to the county and in endless time and money to maintain and keep open for the oil and gas industry. The ongoing road maintenance performed by Uena County requires large equipment, including semi-trucks, graders, and belly dumps. Uena County is in the process of replacing and upgrading its road equipment and plans to purchase five new semi-trucks and two belly dumps and miscellaneous accessories with funding assistance from CIB. The project's total cost is $1.5 million with a, as I've stated earlier, a $1,050,000 grant requested from CIB and $450,000 loan at zero percent interest for ten years. The CIB may provide financing in the form of a loan, even if the application requests a grant. Additionally, the terms of the loan may differ from what is requested in the application. If the CIB does not fund the entire amount, Uena County intends on using funds from revitalization. At this time, I would like to open this to public comment. If there is any public comment, it is a public hearing. We would welcome you to come to the podium and state your name and give your comments.
I'd like to make comments on this just a little bit at this time, if that's appropriate for me at this time, if I want to make comments, John, or.
Probably we could close the public comment and then give comments to the Commission.
If there's anybody from the public, and then you can close that.
And I do not see any of the public, so I will close the public hearing. And now Brad, go ahead with your comments.
I would just like to make a comment on the amount of hours and the work. Of course, this particular winter was everybody was under the same situation in Utah with the snow removal. And then, of course, now we've been hit with the flooding. And now on top of that, we're getting the flooding kind of under control. It's the road repairs, pothole repairs, and the toll that it takes. And we are so thankful for the oil and gas industry out here, but it is a large, you know, cost to the county to keep the roads open and maintained and going. And so I totally am supportive of us trying to, you know, upgrade our equipment. We need to at this time, and I think this is a good application, and I'm in total support of it.
Thank you. I agree. I know that, like you said, we've been hit very hard this year with the extra snow and then the flooding and now all the repairs that will be due. And we are very fortunate that we have the Community Impact Board that we are able to go to for help with these, in these situations. I don't know if many of you know that Uena County is the largest contributor to the CIB funds. While the mineral lease money, we're the, we are the largest contributor of mineral lease funds to the state, to the federal government. Well, not to federal government, but to Utah State. And so we do, we are impacted greatly, and we use the opportunity to utilize those funds when available to help us with those impacts, so.
And I used to remember the figures that was contributed to the SITLA through Uena County, but I don't have those with me. But we are one of the, you know, we are, there's a large amount of money comes from the SITLA for the school kids from Uena County that is produced out here, which is great.
Right. So we do help a lot with the state, with education, with SITLA, and through the mineral lease money that benefits the Utah Department of Transportation as well. They receive a large amount of that mineral lease money to maintain the highways and that, that these trucks are traveling on. I don't know if many of you know, when I was on the CIB back in, I think it was twelve, 2012 to 2016, they gave us a report that showed that Uena County contributed $138 million in that four-year period, just to the CIB, which is only a portion of the mineral lease money that is sent from this area. Also, Duchene County is one of the largest mineral producers, but a lot of their minerals are produced on private or tribal land, and that's why they don't have as much mineral lease money. Just for anybody's information. Okay, if there's no other comments or anything, I would accept a motion.
I'd make the motion, Commissioner, to submit the application to the CIB as presented.
Thank you, and I'll second. Sorry, did you say something?
I was just confirming with Jenny that it was ready, because it just has public hearing there, that we needed an action item to submit it.
Okay, perfect. And I seconded that, so all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. That was unanimous. We will move forward with that application.
Okay, we will adjourn MBA and reconvene.
Commissioners, real quick, there was, there was an error on, and I'm not sure where, so I'm just saying it didn't make it to the agenda. The T-Mobile site addition that's on the commission agenda needed to also be under the MBA agenda as well because of the property interest over there.
Okay.
Okay.
So I think, I don't know what deadline we have. It was, I think it was on the lease.
It's on the lease, but the only interest that CIB has is on Phase Four, which is the outlying stalls. But that portion, I don't believe they have any lien against. Does that sound right, Barbara, or Brenda? I mean, you can.
So back in 2016, when the original lease was executed, did they at that point?
They could have at that point, but we've since, I think. Yeah. I think it may be at that point they may have, but they, I don't think the CIB has any lien against other than the stalls part of it, not to come from.
I was trying to think.
No, we're, yeah. So we were just looking at the original lease, and it had a signature block for Uena County and for the MBA, and then T-Mobile. And so then we were needing to do an amendment to that lease. And so now we're just trying to double-check to see if there needed to be an MBA action taken on it. But if the MBA is no longer on title for the property, then maybe we don't need to.
I think we've actually put all that property in Uena County's name now, have you not?
I was thinking in eighteen, nineteen, we went through and combined that.
We combined the properties, and we did not combine any properties that had a lien against them. And that property was free and clear on that. So we didn't combine that one. We did, or we did combine that one. We didn't combine the conference center because that one has liens, and so did the library. But the rest of the properties that didn't have liens, we did combine those for ease of dislocation.
I'm not trying to be a troublemaker, but I'm just, I just don't think they have an interest anymore.
If they're not in title anymore of the property, then we're good.
Okay.
Yeah. We can just close out the MBA part of this meeting.
Well, I'm just, before we close out, or just comments is that, in case we find something and not have to come back in here and redo it, do we, could we go ahead and do it under that?
I've been going back and forth, and I really, I know people use the term ratify in a lot of different settings. I find no legal basis for that because the public has a right to know what's on the agenda, actions taken. So I was just gonna, all I was going to do was just state that the MBA needed to. So we probably just need to schedule a meeting sometime pretty quick, just so we could wrap that up, but.
Okay, because it wasn't advertised against the MBA.
No, but if they don't have a property interest, then they don't need to sign this lease agreement.
Right then, I guess we'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and adjourn to the MBA and reconvene in commission meeting at this time. All right, ordinance number five thirty, 2023, zero one, fee schedule.
That is, I don't know. Who had the, who revamped the fee schedule?
So I can open it up, and then the, I believe some are coming from Buckskin Hills. Do we have somebody here to talk about that, just in case there's any questions? So while Mike's getting them, there was a request to add some changes to the fee schedule. All of the actual monetary values are regarding the Buckskin Hills complex. There is one clarification, though, that was added to the fee schedule regarding the road department. There were some questions about whether or not we can charge a fee for water utilities that are accessing homes, not their main line, but to a residential home, new construction, or if they're adding another one. Not to get into that legal debate right now, but just to add clarification to the fee schedule, I've added the line that says these fees do not apply under UCA seventeen B one, one oh three, which is when you have your local districts, which Ashley Valley is and others, it says you can't charge that fee. I still contend that that doesn't apply to when you're actually building and connecting to the main line. I know there's some dispute on that. They think it's anything that they're doing. But when a residence is building the line, that's not the utility company who's laying a line. They're trying to access it. So I just wanted to put that section in here, request that it be put in here, and then we will deal with that as it keeps coming up. And I know Jeff Ellis in Matt Kazir's department, he's been in contact with us, and we've been discussing that. But it is a statute that we need to be aware of, and it definitely does apply to main lines. There's no question there. So I'm just requesting that we have that short sentence put there. Then the next, or are there any questions on that?
What was that, UCA?
UCA seventeen B dash one dash one oh three.
Okay, thank you.
And then the other, oh, sorry.
Make a motion on that?
Not yet. I think we can get all of the changes first. Hey, there we go.
Maddie.
How are you doing, Maddie? So I was just teeing up what the changes were, and then have you be here if there are any questions for it. But I can, I can mention them real quick. So on the last page of the fee schedule, it has under Buckskin Hills rental prices. They want to add season pass for motocross, May through October. Individual pass, $75. Family pass, in parentheses, for people, $250. And then continuing under Buckskin Hills, facility rental fees, doing a mud bog, $750 daily, $1,000 weekend, and that's defined as Thursday through Saturday. ATV course, $750 daily, $1,000 weekend, same definition, Thursday through Saturday. Speedway non-leased, $750 daily, $1,000 weekend, same definition. And I think that's, is that it?
Baja Truck. Maddie, maybe come up and state your name.
I'm not seeing the Baja one on here.
Okay, we might have needed to add that one after.
I can text Karina.
So Baja Truck, we'd also like to add seven fifty day and thousand for the weekend. And that's all of them.
It's a Baja Track?
Yeah, Baja Truck, so all three of those, the Baja Truck, the ATV Ravine Track.
I think it's allergies, are you saying truck or track?
Truck. The Baja Truck Track.
Truck Track.
Truck with a U, then track with a A.
Okay, just wanted to make sure I was getting that right.
So those three, the Baja Truck Track, the ATV Ravine Track, and the Mud Drag, were all previously there, and we've had people come and request to host events on those areas, in those venues. So we're just gonna spruce them up.
Sounds good.
Okay, so what we could do, I'll just have to print off a clean version of this. So if we want to add that just under the, under the Speedway, we can do that, but it's the same amounts?
Yes.
And everything?
Yep.
All right, any other discussion on the fee schedules? Okay, I'd entertain a motion then.
I would make a motion that we approve the ordinance zero five dash three zero dash two zero two three oh one, the fee schedules as presented.
Okay, we have a motion. Let's see. I'll second it. We have a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. All right, Melanie. You're on. T-Mobile Site Edition.
Melanie Silcox, Western Park. I'm requesting approval of this contract. It's been to the work session once before. There was some questions that you guys had asked, asked as far as if a hundred dollars was the proper price that we should be getting additional to what they already pay us to add the 112 square feet. You had requested that, we talked to Barbara. I did talk to Barbara. If I say anything wrong, please come correct me. She sent out numerous emails, never got a response from anybody. She said that the way these are paid normally are sent to different parties. Right now, the leases are being sent to MCAT. Typically, they don't like to share this information. They try to keep it a little more quiet. I talked with Vinnie Rowe, who is the person with the T-Mobile contract. He said that as a normal for them, they're paying $3 a square foot for the property lease. I talked with Barbara once again on that. She thought that sounded great. So we rounded it up to $350 additional to what they're paying a month, which works out to be $3.13 a square foot. They're adding 112 square feet. So with, in their contract, it increases 10% every five years. So it's a 2% increase each year that they will increase that. The contract does end or need re-signed in 2045.
Any questions, comments, motions?
I would make a motion that we approve the T-Mobile Site Edition as presented by Melanie Silcox.
I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passed. Hey, sit up there. I'm not through picking on you yet. That was a terrific job over there this weekend. You know, they, I think it's over 200 kids in that sheep camp, camp over there. And boy, what a great job. What a, you know, I mean, our facility, they just, you know, we do things right over there.
They love it.
You talk about bringing a lot of people into town to an event.
And they stay a while.
Yep, and it was a two-day event, and it was, it was really, well, they just bragged about our facility.
Well, good. They go all over the nation. He said that this is by far their most favorite facility that they come to. So I was trying to remember how many years we've been doing it, but seven, seven years. So, yeah, it's been a little bit, and they love it. Every year, they increase the numbers and keep going, so.
We run the best facility in the state of Utah, in my opinion, and what it's set up and what it's done. And, you know, but anyway, thank you. Tell everybody over there thank you and appreciate it.
I will do.
But I was very impressed, and we really appreciate it, and it makes us commissioners look good.
Good. That's what we hope. Thank you.
All righty.
Are you done picking on me now?
Yes.
All right.
No, I received something from the USU Extension for the Junior Livestock Show, I guess, or maybe it was, yeah. And I have to tell you, I'm gonna need a lesson in the terminology and what it means, because as they went through and mentioned all the different venues, events, I mean, the different events and that, I thought I knew a little bit about animals, but no.
We will have lunch down there one day.
Yes, and I will need a little lesson in all these shows and activities that they do.
It is great. It's a lot of fun. All right.
Mr. Chair, can I ask a question real quick? Mike, I just need to ask you a question. Do you mind coming up? We're back for the T-Mobile Site Edition. So on that, it had an escalator clause in the contract. And then it's from. And then it's from two thousand sixteen and it was a five-year term. And then it goes up a hundred and ten percent and then each year, it, it can be for subsequent one-year terms, and it's a hundred and two percent. Looking back, how mu- however much they paid, it increases two percent each time. Can I have Karina, who can she check in your office to make sure that they are up, up to speed on how much they're paying, unless Melanie already is one hundred percent certain that they have made those increases year after year?
Is this on, yep, okay, I talked with Margie Shul today. Um, she said that in two thousand sixteen, the contract was initiated. And in October of twenty-one, they did increase it to seven hundred and seventy dollars.
And then did it go, has it gone up each year, two percent since then?
No, um, when I talked with Karina, she thought that that was a ten percent increase at five years that they increased it, where, which works out to be two percent in the five years, is that not?
Yeah, so, so what I'm, and, and, and we can talk, I don't, I don't want to stall out the meeting. But the, the initial term was a five-year term, twenty sixteen to then twenty twenty-one, right? So October of twenty twenty-one, then we're showing that they did do the hundred and ten percent increase.
A ten percent increase, right?
Well, a hundred, it went up, it was a hundred and ten percent, so yes, a ten percent increase. And then, if I'm reading this right, on the terms, they can have nine successive one-year periods as extended periods moving forward. And they can do, it, it can automatically renew for one-year increments, nine, nine times. We're amending it now because they're adding more square footage. But the way I was reading that is then in twenty-two, it should have also gone up two percent. Because it had that, it had that two percent escalator. So let, let's just talk afterwards and just make sure.
We'll pull all payments from that T-Mobile has made to us on that site.
And let's just, let's just see. And then that way, when we get to the amount that you were saying, from today, we are now adding the additional square footage with another three hundred and fifty dollars, right?
Yes.
Yes, on top of what is in the original amount, so I just want to make sure that it has, it has escalated properly through those additional years to then add this other amount.
We will pull all that and see.
And, and maybe they are, it's just something I wanted to check because we're doing one-year increments right now, as, as they move through their lease.
Okay, so now it needs to be every year that they increase the two percent, not five years, ten?
Yes, because it was initial five-year term and then they had the right to renew uh, nine successive one-year periods.
At two percent increase per year.
And then as you go on the rent and other charges, that's where it was getting at. The rent for each extended period shall be an amount equal to one hundred two percent of the rent for the immediately preceding term. So each of those one year should have increased two percent. So it sounds like, yes, we, we know it did in twenty-one, we probably just need to check twenty-two and then know in October of, of this year, that additional increase would be happening. So it sounds like we just need to check on one year. Great, sorry, I, I just, I had everybody right here, so I wanted to ask the question.
Think I signed everything correctly. Okay, uh, number nine, Jess. How are you doing Jess?
Good, good. Jess Herman, Uena County Facilities. The, I, I'm bringing to you guys a, is, it's just an agreement with QC testing. We are gonna be pouring concrete at the new, the ice rink addition, and this is to test the concrete that's gonna be being poured. And so how it works is BHI, when they're pouring it, QC testing comes, tests it, make sure we're within par. And so it's just an agreement that we will be paying them, as part of that project, we'll be paying them, and they have their fee chart with it, so. Shouldn't be, it shouldn't be terrible.
And that is part of what we figured into the costs?
Yeah, oh yeah.
Okay, and do you know what that, roughly what those costs are to test?
Yes, so I looked at it, um, with a truck fee of eighty dollars, if that's a whole day. Um, it is for concrete, it's like twenty dollars for ca- cast concrete cylinders. The concrete slump test is twenty bucks.
It's very minimal.
Yeah, concrete yield test is twenty dollars, they're all twenty dollars, so shouldn't be too bad.
Okay.
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 Alrighty, okay, any other questions, comments? If not, I'd look for a motion.
Um, I would make a motion that we approve the QC testing agreement to test concrete at the ice rink. Um, quickly though, was that something that we ran through legal? Okay, perfect.
We're good there.
Okay. Then that is my motion.
I will second your motion. We'll make, make sure we give Mike a copy, I'll second your motion, all in favor.
Aye.
Aye, uh, motion passed. Okay, uh, are we in need of a closed session today?
Yes, and, um, so if we can, probably makes sense to just flip ten and eleven.
Eleven, okay.
And then when we're done with that, if the motion to close session could, because we're gonna have to call outside counsel on this, can we just say three forty-five?
Uh, can it be quick?
We both have meetings at four.
Well, what'd you do that for?
Well.
Cause we've been getting done so fast.
Well, we'd be out here at quarter after three.
Okay, well, we can call soon, I'll, I'll text him right now. I was just gonna give him a little bit of a heads up.
Well, as soon as they can, and we'll make it work. Okay, alright, uh, public comments, we'll go to public comments. Alright, we see none, public comments, we'll go ahead and, uh, look for a motion to go into closed session.
I would make that motion to go into closed session for the purpose of discussing pending or imminent litigation. And when finished, resume into commission meeting and adjourn.
I'll second that motion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion passed.
Susan, Susan, don't leave.